Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Denise, would you please call the roll?
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Toohill?
Oop.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Well, counsel, we have three officers with us this evening who are going to be sworn in. I think this is a Fairfield first. So this is the class of 2019. So we will start, gentlemen, by let's come on out front here.
I got it.
And then slide next to each other right here so the cameras can get you.
Good.
And then we'll do the open of all this one at a time. So let's see. Start with Brian Burnett. And if you'd raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Brian Burnett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
In the city of Fairfield.
In the city of Fairfield.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, Jonathan Scott. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Johnny Scott. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Do to the best of my ability.
Do to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
In the city of Fairfield.
In the city of Fairfield.
As now.
As now.
Or hereafter required by law.
As hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Tyler Anderson, raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Tyler Anderson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of police officer.
Discharge all the duties of police officer.
In the city of Fairfield.
In the city of Fairfield.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Great, congratulations. We'd also just like to formally get to know the officers briefly. So, gentlemen, if you would just each take a turn and for one minute either introduce your families, tell us your background where you're from, so go ahead and podium yours.
Yes. I'm Brian Burnett. I grew up here. It's been a long time, probably about 20-plus years. My mom's here, Pat Millen. Better half is the Sander crew. And then her little boys, Jacob, Braden, and Mason. I was an Army guy. I did my time, I retired, did a couple combat tours. Now I'm back here. I was a certified police officer up in Michigan for two years. And now I'm down here back home. So it's good to be back.
Tyler, I'm Johnny Scott. I grew up just south of Des Moines in Indianola. And just actually graduated from college in May from Iowa Lakes Community College. I just wanted to thank my dad, Chris Scott, for making his way down here. He didn't have to, two-hour drive, just for this, but he didn't have to do that. And I just wanted to thank him and my mom for making me the man I am today.
Hello, everyone. My name's Tyler Anderson. I grew up Drummond Island, Michigan. Moved to Iowa in 2010 where I attended the University of Iowa. Lived here up until about nine months ago, did a short stint down in Georgia. Very excited to be back in the state. But I'm here with my wife Katie tonight. She's Iowa local from Columbus Junction. But I guess we're both excited to be back in Iowa. Excited and humbled to be a part of this, so thank you for welcoming us.
Well, we thank you very much. We're excited about your beginning with us here. We hope you have a long career with our community. We have a very good community. We have good leadership in Captain Thomas and the rest of the force. Great to have the support of all your family members here, so congratulations and good luck.
Thanks.
Hey, counsel, are there any changes or additions to this evening's agenda? If not, then we'll move to our -- actually, we did add an item, counsel, an action item, which is under on the second page, and that's the -- let's see. Yes, the Amendment Three to the Engineering Agreement with French Renter for Step One. Melanie, that's our addition, correct?
The CIP.
The CIP? I'm sorry. Yes, that's right. Okay. Yeah, so an engineering services agreement for our street CIP. Again, this is something that is budgeted, but we needed to get it into this evening's meeting, so we're going to add that to the agenda at this time. So then we'll move to our consent agenda, and in that we have approval of the minutes from the September 23 council meeting. Approval of payroll for October 4 of $118,207.79. We have acceptance of the Wayfinding Commission minutes. We have approval of liquor license for Hy-Vee and for the Fairfield Arts and Convention Center. We have approval of claims of the amount of $863,579.13. Over $75,000 claims. We have Alliant Energy at $77,176.70. Drish construction of $189,278. Iowa community insurance pool, $228,879.23. And PKG contracting at $130,376.63. Any questions, counsel, regarding those consent agenda items? Not entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Gandy. New discussion? Not please call the roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, counsel, we'll move to our public forum and appearances. And the first wishing to address, counsel, is Carol Schmidt. Is Carol here? She is not. Then we'll move to the next, which would be Joel Rudman. Is Joel here? Yes, sir.
Hi. I've not been to one of these, so I'll just speak freely about my idea. I recently moved to Fairfield from New York City and just recently rented a three-bedroom apartment in the square, Fairfield Square. And I realized after I signed the lease that there's no overnight parking allowed for any resident in the -- or for anybody between 2:00 and 6:00. And I wanted to come to the city council and propose that perhaps there's some dispensation that's done for people that can show a lease that live there. I have a wife and two kids, and to park two or three blocks away, particularly in the winter, I think is going to be pretty difficult. Being in New York City, we had a lot of parking regulations and whatnot, and one of the things they had was alternate-site parking rules and whatnot. And I was thinking that perhaps as a solution for those that can show a lease that they live on one of the three or four streets that abut the square, that they have the opportunity to park overnight during any period of time. And through that, through a sticker that they would have on their window, they wouldn't get penalized or any type of tickets that might happen during that period of time. And I think it would be a great way to also create some activity at night, just having people walking around, parking their cars, instead of sort of being ghost-like in the middle of the night, which is what it seems like. And I just think that as a taxpayer, I should have the right to park in front of my -- where I live. And particularly even on Friday, if you recall, it was pretty cold walking around. And once the snow and the ice that I had last year was pretty slippery. The idea of coming home and not being able to park near my place is bothersome. So I thought it'd be a great opportunity. I spoke to a couple of people that live in this square. I spoke to a couple of landlords, including Chris Johnson. And he thought, he estimated there are about 35, perhaps apartments are in the square that would probably be able to benefit from this. And if there are any concerns regarding street cleaning or whatnot, I think that if some sort of schedule is announced in advance for the residents, they would move their cars. And at the same time, there'd be some sort of a rule in place where they couldn't park for longer than 10 to 12 hours, so that their cars don't just sort of park there the whole time, but it has to be moved. But fact remains, they should be able to park overnight. And that's what I wanted to present to the city council.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Counsel, I know we've had discussions about permitted parking on the square in the past. Definitely, there's been a trend towards renovating more of the downtown upper floors into apartments where, for a couple of decades, they were offices and incubator space for businesses. They're being converted now to, back to apartments, so there is more demand for that. Any desire to look at some solutions for some of those folks that do live on the square?
It would be nice if he could put his ideas down in writing and bring them before the appropriate committee and take a look at it.
Yeah, we'll do that. Any other thoughts, counsel, regarding?
Yeah, this is just a general issue. At least twice before since I've been on council. And my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Daryl, is that the thinking is if we allow parking anytime, then the people will get used to it, and they'll park there those few nights or days a year when we don't want them there, which is snow removal, maybe even spring or fall street cleaning. So is that pretty much correct? So the idea of kind of all or nothing, it doesn't maybe not sit well with some of us because there's a lot of nights where that's not going to be a problem, snow. And so I would be open to trying to make something a little bit more flexible where at least certain nights of the year. Some cities announce snow emergencies, and then during a snow emergency, parking is prohibited from certain areas. And it is up to the citizens to be alert, so that if a snow emergency were announced and you got towed, that's on you. So there's other ways that we could handle this. I think it would be good to look at it because we are trying to encourage people to live in our downtown. And I used to live downtown, and I had to park a block away. I know exactly what you're talking about. It can be burdensome.
Joel, the other thing that's come up when we've had these discussions is to permit some parking in the parking lots that are just off the square. And in some cases, they're behind buildings that are on the square. So, you know, you're walking a little bit, but you have some designated areas to park that are in public parking places. Where is your -- where is your?
Well, I rented.
Which street are you on?
I'm across the street, 56 South Main, right beside the wine store.
So you're above your business, then?
Exactly.
Okay.
And so just to be clear, Michael, what I'm proposing is that the same rules apply for the rest of the city that would also apply in the square. However, people who lived here would have a sticker on their window, so they wouldn't be ticketed, but would have certain rules applied to them specifically, which is you couldn't park there for more than, say, six to eight hours. But you're allowed to park between 2:00 and 6:00, so you can drop your, you know, family off and take them off to school.
Okay. So we'll refer this to the Public Safety Committee. And when they meet, if you could address that committee with your ideas more specifically and publicize it, and have other downtown residents to come to the meeting as well.
Terrific. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay. Next, Bo Lou.
Good evening. I complain about the mowing glass, the fence. I get four bill for this. For one is for one place twice, and then mow it. I don't want to say all the detail, okay? My complaint is notice. Because number one, when they give me the notice, they set up the rule for the property owner, you only give you one notice and then for whole year.
Okay.
And my arrangement is most of them is my tenant to mow the glass. And for one of this, twice. Actually, before the city go to mow the glass, he mow half of the section. Another half, I talked to him a few times, and he said he going to mow it, he fixed the mow and then go to fix it. Okay. And anyway, city mow it anyway. I come to pay the bill, $190. That's a lot. You know, before it's 75, right now it's 190. Anyway, I pay it. And then I suppose I pass the bill to him, but he owe me quite a lot of money already. I doubt he can pay for this. But he have difficulty. In that building that two week, his son is in hospital. He is not really in Fairfield. And then the city suddenly do the second mow, mow this one again, only about two week. And actually, what happened, I just tried to, I just aware the situation, have to let him to mow the glass, pay attention because -- and only two week, about two week. And here, Monday morning, I call him about 10 o'clock, because usually I don't want to call people too early. And he said, "Did you mow my glass?" I said, "I did not." He said, "Somebody mow it." I on the way go to hospital. So he's pissed up. He, when he's, I suppose pass the bill to him, and he saw it. You know, the city.
Yeah.
Charged you too much. Okay. The another tenant, she mow the glass every two week. Basically, he has, she has somebody to do it. I don't know, maybe they have some problem. So city go to mow anyway. Of course, she not happy. Both of them write down some document, I, yeah, I turn it in to some people. Like, you know. And for another property, the glass is barely reach that high. I just, at that day, I just try to arrange to mow it. And suddenly, when I pass by, it's mow already. And the previous two day, one day I go to, basically, I go to have the doctor visit, so I little bit school up my time. Anyway, so I get four bill, $190 for each. I thinking, number one, the notice, it should be, should be have the notice for one property.
Each time for, you're saying you?
For every special situation, I had, I did not finish. And second, the fair, okay. Like the tenant, I said mow twice. At that time, the area, many glass is taller than his and mine, actually. And even right now, have one spot still there after almost one month. So you want to mow, you mow fairly, you know?
Okay, we understand.
Yeah, okay.
So let me ask Scott Vaughn, our zoning officer, to remind the counsel what our rules are. And I understand that just receiving one notice is one of your complaints, and then the other is the high price.
Yeah, and another one is the fee, is penny's fee. And that, and.
Go ahead.
Okay. I think city, sky is a very good person. She's responsible, she work very hard, only one person take care of this. I have my problem also. As a landlord, I not really, it's a little bit too nice, not strict. So some tenant is not really do good thing in certain way, okay? I have my problem. But in this situation, I really complain. And I have a proposal. I said, "Why we do this way?" The city, because the glass is grow up every two week, you ready to cut. So why every month you set up the time twice per month? Let everybody know about this time, we going to look at the glass. If the glass is taller than this requirement, you give the notice. At the meantime, charge about $40 or $50 fee, a small amount fee. This is sure as notice. And also, if city can collect money. And then after give them five days, if they not cut it. After five days, not cut it. Then, then city go to cut. And at that time, you can charge it 150, something like that, because we already give you the notice, we set up this time, the month.
So we understand. And I think we want to have Scott, our zoning officer, explain what our policy is and why, so that the counsel understands. You know, one thing I'll just say is that the price is supposed to be a disincentive. It's supposed to be motivation for people to keep up with mowing their grass. And that's, you know, why, we don't want to be in the business of mowing grass. That's the last thing we want our people doing, which is why the prices tend to be set a little bit higher, so that people will comply with the ordinance as it's written. But Scott, if you could come up and?
I think you've all seen a copy of the letter, and we send those out at the beginning of each mowing season. About six, seven years ago, when I started, John Revelinsky had me reformulate that so we could highlight in yellow at the bottom that this was their only warning for the whole mowing season, that any, each and every property that they had had to stay within code after they got that letter. There's landlords like Bo that have a lot of properties in town. And, you know, when we restructured the fees a while ago, it was to try and make sure that people were maintaining their properties and taking pride in their properties. And as the mayor said a little bit ago, we don't want to mow yards. Daryl's got all kinds of other stuff to do. I've got plenty of other stuff to do than have to drive around and look at that stuff. So any questions on the letter or?
So the letter goes to all landlord or those that have had a complaint?
Every time. I wrote about 129 letters this mowing season.
To the complaint, right. And also, this is, what percentage of the people that you notice and send letters to are from following up on a complaint or proactively your own?
I can't give you the exact number. We've got an actual list from 2012, and almost every year I have repeat offenders on it by the tens.
Scott, if I own five properties, do I get one of these letters with all five properties across the top?
No, you just get it for that one, and that one is to tell you that all your properties need to stay up to code.
Scott, so these four dates on here are not all the same property. They're various properties.
What's that?
These mowing dates that are listed in the request to speak?
Yes.
They're various properties, they're not all the same property.
Correct. Two of them are repeat, and then the other two are separate.
The dates are pretty close together, so I was asking about that.
And they were all given the seven days to get it taken care of before we came in?
The one time.
Okay, for the first time.
The first letter that they get is their warning for the season.
Their warning, got it.
And you don't go around looking for mows, lawns to mow, you wait for a complaint to come?
No, we're proactive.
You're proactive?
We are. But I've got plenty of other things to do, so I could spend a lot more time just doing that, but I just don't have time to do that.
And this is the first year with the new fees?
Correct.
Okay. So, counsel, you did approve the higher fees, and that went through a public hearing process. So it's, again, it's intended to be a disincentive. It does sound like a lot of money, so.
One thing that was a little unfortunate was that we passed the new fee over the summer. So the letter says 75, and then they get billed 190, which is two and a half times that.
That's just minimum 75.
Yeah. Still, though, it's one year that's an issue, but moving forward, I think everyone knows, or most property owners should know, the new fee.
Okay.
So do you think we've been understood?
Yeah, we have one other person, Michelle Randolph. Is she here?
Was Michelle one of your tenants?
Yeah.
Yeah, she was one of the tenants.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So she's not going to appear separately? I just?
They're busy, all busy. My husband is busy, all the tenant are busy.
Okay.
So I just come.
Okay. All right, thank you, Scott. So did you have any final words?
I just want to propose a better thing to do. You do this way, you can, you can collect some money and also make people to do the job. And the fourth, suppose you every fourth month, you go to, the inspector go to look, nobody, everybody's property, you go to look. If it's not right, charge it $40, and that sure as a notice. Sure as a notice. After five day, if they still not do it, then the city send the people go to do the job. In this way, because you already have the notice, most of people take care of the things. And the city get less, would do less job, would do less job. And everybody know, at this time, city going to look at you. If you not right, they give, you have to, no matter what, $50, $40, something, some kind of money have to pay, and you have to mow. If you don't mow, after five days, after five days, city go to mow, and you go to charge the high fee, 150. That's fine, you know? And this way, you get, basically, you get notice for every property. And the tenant not complain, they say, "We don't get the notice." And, and, and it's fair. Everybody don't, no matter what, no matter is your property or tenant or whatever, you own the property or not.
Okay.
And then after that, you, city can do less job.
Yeah, yeah, we understand your suggestion. Counsel, any modification that you would like to review or suggest in terms of our policy before next year?
Sorry, Bo, what you're describing would actually make more work for our city crews, which is the opposite of what we're trying to do here.
What do you say, could not do it?
If we do what you're suggesting, we're actually spending more time.
More postage.
On mowing, more phone calls, more notices. We're trying to spend less. So now it's on you, as a property owner, to take responsibility for your lawns.
But, yeah, I know you want to save time, but you, but you don't do some people and don't do some people, that's another problem, basically.
Well, thank you for your suggestion. You know, we have a policy in place, and if it can get reviewed again before next season, possibly. But I think, you know, the point is, we don't want to mow, we don't want to do more in the direction of monitoring mowing either. We want property owners to be responsible. The highest percentage of people in the city are responsible. And I just think you probably should communicate with your tenants, you know, more strongly that this is important and that the city has raised the fees and to keep up with this. And? The other part is make sure if there is a problem, communicate with Scott or with the city office. We have worked with other people before, and we will work with people in the future. We just don't know about if there are issues that each homeowner or each tenant has. We can't, we don't know those things unless somebody tells us. Okay.
Yeah, I will. But I do pay attention, actually. Only.
Yeah, thank you. And we'll, and I think that's a great point, Aaron, that if you are aware that somebody has extenuating circumstance, hospital, or some family issue, then please just let us know. Okay. All right, counsel, we'll move on then to our resolutions, action items, and ordinances. The? Uh, the first one, I'm going to ask Aaron to describe to the council is something that's come up through our audit process. We have our state auditors, uh, with us for the last couple of weeks, so, Aaron.
Yeah, the, the, actually, the department of management came out with a new policy that any fund transfers, whether it be from the general fund to another fund or from a TIF account to the general fund or to a capital improvement fund, any fund transfers have to be approved by resolution. So the first one we, we've got here as an action item for the first time that we're doing this, um, in the future, we'll have them in the consent agenda, but they'll still be as resolution. Um, but they are, but we have to do this by, uh, department of management policy to do tran, fund transfers.
And council, so the, uh, the resolution that you have before you has, uh, four different transfer orders, uh, and those are the orders that you'll be approving. Uh, this is, I, I believe these are being approved post, right, because they have already been made?
Yeah, I think so.
So they have already been made. We, you're approving those for our records and then, um, going forward, you'll be receiving these transfer orders ahead of those transfers, um, probably within a week to two weeks ahead of the transfers.
As a resolution?
Pardon me, as a resolution, yeah.
Could, um, Aaron tell us which of these are standard required transfers and which ones are in error?
None of them are, I don't think any of them are in error.
No.
They're all...
There was a coding mistake on one of them, but I'm not being critical, I just want to know which ones are standard transfers that happen all the time and others are...
I just, I skimmed them, can you go up to?
It's section two.
Section two is the...
That's the only...
Corrective transfer from Lincoln TIF, creating a West Industrial Park TIF fund due to...
I mean, the Federal Insurance Contribution Act, that's, that's a standard transfer?
Yeah.
That happen all the time on a regular basis or no?
I think the Lincoln Avenue TIF and the West Industrial TIF was a, uh, I think was a, was, TIF funds were put into the fund and they shouldn't have been, and they should have gone to the West Industrial TIF. I, I think, I, like I said, I think it was a coding error where we put funds in one place where it should have gone to the other TIF fund.
Well, section one, that's, that's a standard.
Yes, that's a standard one.
So when these come to us in the future, could you just give us an explanation as to which ones are standard and which ones are error?
Oh, absolutely.
So we have an idea of...
Yep.
Well, there won't be, there won't be any corrections, uh, I don't think in the future, Doug, and I think that part of the, part of this process that we've gone to in, in recognizing this is that they, they're being cited now as corrections because they were going into, into, and I think they had involved local option sales tax and money that were, that would have gone to, uh, to streets through, that are connected to TIF projects were, were being paid out of there, where now we're going to transfer into...
To the capital improvement fund for that TIF area.
For that particular TIF area. So you're not likely to see corrective actions, it'll just be transfers designated?
There could be a, a mistake and, and I agree with that and that's fine. We can certainly say, hey, we, and like this one says it was a coding error, we can certainly say, hey, this was something that was put into this account in error and so we're transferring it from this fund to this one. That, that, that's no problem, but typically the, their general transfers for, because they come in like, uh, well, when the funds come in, they come in into the TIF funds, but we can't spend out of TIF funds. We have to have a capital improvement fund for that TIF area, so then we have to transfer it to that capital improvement fund and then to spend it out of that. So those are going to be the typical ones, but yeah, I, we can certainly highlight the, yeah, we made a mistake on this area or this area.
So the fact that the auditors are having us do this would imply that any community that has a TIF and can't spend out of the TIF has a resolution for every transfer from TIF.
Yep, in fact, all transfer, fund transfers have to be done this way.
This is just designed to provide tighter oversight, is what this is for.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
And make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Anderson?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any other discussion? Uh, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign? Thank you. Uh, next, Aaron, I'll ask you to talk about the sign-on bonus.
Um, what we have with this is, uh, we're, we, we need to put in place a policy or a written policy for the police department in the past or in the past of, of the, of the department as far as our hiring, we, we thought it would be a good policy to, if we hired a city certified police officer, that we, instead of spending the ten thousand dollars to certify somebody, we could give them a bonus for being certified already. Um, in this case, we actually hired a certified officer here this past, this past hiring process, so we, we need to have a policy or a written policy in place approved, so that we can put, give them this, a six thousand dollar signing bonus to, uh, for that incentive. And that's what we're putting in place here.
Okay, council, any questions?
This has been offered several years, so this has been a practice, but not encoded.
We've never had someone qualify.
Right, we, we have hired a certified officer.
It's been a practice for years already, it just hasn't been exercised.
Yeah, a number of cities do this also, so it's not anything out of the ordinary, it's just we need to have it in, on paper for the process.
And will this come out of the police department's budget?
Yes.
When will it be paid?
Uh, how, how did you propose to do that?
As soon as possible, it sounds like.
If you approve tonight, probably next week, sir.
Yeah. We're just going to approve this one transfer and then we're going to encode, uh, have a more formal policy come before us. Is that what I understand?
It sounds like this is the policy.
This is just a letter, it looks like. This is it?
We, we can have a, we can write something up to have, have a better, if you'd like it, in a more formal personnel.
The state auditor requires both. We have to have a city policy that addresses it, plus they're recommending that, uh, the letter we sent with council approval, um, because of the, uh, budgeted funds.
Right, and we don't have a city policy written in place yet.
No, sir.
So that's what we should do.
Yep.
Personnel committee, I guess, will take care of that?
Yeah, we'll take care of it.
We're in the process, we're kind of struggling with it because it's, just trying to decide if it's going to be a police department policy, because it only really applies or should be a citywide. Um, so we're kind of, we're just doing the policy and now we're trying to figure out, does, uh, you know, Darrell Biskar have a specialty he wants to give a sign-on bonus for, or maybe the water department with Steve, so that's why, we're waiting to reach out to all the department heads to see if they want to offer the same thing.
It's pretty obvious it makes sense here, so, open to approval.
Okay, move by Florinoy to approve the employee bonus.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council, the next item is, is not prepared, so we will table this, the agreement with Calhoun, uh, Burn, Calhoun and Burns for the bridge report. And we'll move on to the agreement with JCG Land Services for the Highway One project. Mel, if you could address us on that.
Um, for the Highway One widening project from Fillmore to Libertyville Road, uh, we know that there will be a need for permanent rightway on this project. Um, there will possibly be some permanent easements for Storm Sewer and some temporary easements for grading and construction. Um, the land acquisition has been part of the scope from the beginning and so what we have tonight, um, is an agreement with JCG, similar to our other projects, uh, that have had land needs. JCG will serve as our primary contact with the landowners, um, doing the negotiation and, um, identifying fair compensation, uh, for damages to those properties. Uh, their, um, full scope of work starts on page five, the agreement, but again, it's very similar to everything that they have done on past projects. Compensation estimates corresponding with the property owners and then, um, they package everything up and, uh, give it to us so that, uh, our attorneys can do the final payment and the closure on that. If a project would go to condom, or if a property would go to condemnation, that is outside of this agreement, um, you know, we all hope that the negotiations go well enough that we don't need to plan on it, but, uh, so it would be a separate agreement when that time comes. Um, their agreement is an hour, is hourly, so the time that it takes to get the easements is what, uh, will be based on their payment. However, they do have a not to exceed amount of one hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. Uh, there are thirty-three properties along Highway One that we expect to get, um, some sort of land for easements from, um, so that breaks down to about twenty-seven hours per property. Again, we hope it goes better than that, but this is a not to exceed amount.
Okay, thank you, Melanie. What do we have budgeted in the project for these services?
Um, we grouped the, um, land purchase and these services together.
Okay.
Um, my estimates at this point is that we need to have some more funds. We have a hundred and ninety budget for both of them. Um, now that we're, we have a better idea of the scope and stuff, we'll be looking at more.
Okay.
So we will, um, I actually just hadn't, sent an email with Shai Hattery today about continuing to look for additional funds for this project, um, whether it's a safety grant or, um, stormwater grants, but additional funding for the Highway One to make up for, um, any overruns and cost.
Okay, thank you. Council, any other questions for Melanie?
We use JCG for step one and two.
Yes. And we started with them on Libertyville Road, but they didn't finish all of the properties on Libertyville Road.
Entertaining a motion then to approve the agreement with JCG.
So move.
Move by Hallie, second by Florinoy. Any discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign? Okay, thank you, Mel, go ahead. Um, the next item, which would be a change order for, um, the wastewater treatment plant, package one.
Yep. So bid package one, um, is the treatment plant itself, uh, awarded to PKG Contracting. Uh, this is a no-cost change order that moves the completion date. Um, it moves the substantial completion date from July one to September twenty-ninth of twenty nineteen and the final completion date from October fourteenth, twenty nineteen to January twelve of twenty twenty. Um, attached to the change order is the documentation related to this. The bid, as you might remember, that the bids were, um, held on to for quite some time and PKG honored their original bid and so there is correspondence between the city and PKG, um, requesting or, or formalizing that they may need an additional ninety days. Um, PKG originally hoped to be done and not need this change order, but at this point, they are not substantially complete, um, so we're processing this, we'd like to process this change order, um, as a formality.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion by Anderson to approve the, uh, change order for, and that's the date, moving the date to January twelfth, twenty twenty for substantial completion.
Second.
Second by Florinoy. Any discussion?
Quick question, um, I'm sure the EPA and DNR have been alerted and they're okay with the extension?
Um, on our EPA schedule, and I have it in my EPA report tonight, is they have a, I think it's a December of nineteen, maybe an October of nineteen, completion date for the treatment plant. Um, we're very close to operational or very close to a substantially complete date, so we're not going to be modifying, um, the EPA and we don't think that this change or, this change affects EPA. Um, EPA schedule is a little broader than what this contract is specific to.
All right, thanks.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign? Motion passes. Uh, we'll move to consideration of, um, number two amendment to the engineering agreement.
So your next three items are all related to step two. This is on the conveyance side of the wastewater improvements. Step two is, goes from Lamson Woods to MUM, following Crow Creek. Uh, the good news is that we are ready to go to bid for that project. We'll have, uh, we'll be setting some dates at the next council meeting. Um, but before we get to that point, we have, uh, some paperwork and some cleanup that needs to be done to our engineering agreements, um, so I'm going to let Steve and Patrick go over the specifics of these, but the next three items all relate to step two.
Even though the second one says step one.
Yeah, originally the projects were combined and that's, yeah.
I'll do my best to keep this brief without getting too far into the weeds, but it's really easy to get into the weeds very quickly on this subject.
It's one of the reasons we have the transfers, because the projects were...
Yeah. Um, so as Melanie said, uh, what we're doing now is required before we're allowed to start the bid process for the, uh, through rural development for step two. Um, and so there should be a, an extra piece of paper that was handed out, um, at each of your places. I've, I've tried to summarize the next three agenda items on one piece of paper front and back, so I'm consolidating about eighty pages with the stuff onto one here, so...
Thank you.
Uh, yes. Uh, so if we start...
It's still confusing.
If we start with this side, everyone, um, it's kind of the line on top. The top half of this page is, I'm, what I'm trying to do is just kind of summarize, uh, where we started, where we came from and where we're going on all these projects, okay? Uh, so the very first line item is step one, SRF ESA, which was approved way back in two thousand thirteen. Um, at that time, uh, that original contract for design of step one included, if you go all the way to the far right, the two hundred and seventeen thousand of fee for step two, okay? Um, there was enough preliminary design work that had to be done on step two in order for us to actually design step one. So there was that amount of fee for step two in the step one agreement. So that answers that very first question.
So of the eight hundred and forty-five, uh, thousand, five hundred dollars, two hundred and sixteen thousand and twenty-five was out of that, okay?
Yep, uh-huh. So then the next two items are, they really have no bearing on, uh, the amendments that we're doing today. I just wanted to have them there because as I was doing this, I was getting them all in one piece of paper. So those are just FYIs, those are large deduction amendments that were done when we did what we're doing tonight with the step one project, which is combining all of these former agreements into one rural development style agreement, okay?
Okay.
Uh, so those two were, are deductions that were done, um, at the time that step one was converted from our standard, uh, engineering contract to a rural development style contract.
Did we save that money?
Save what?
Did we save that money?
No. So that, uh, went out and then back, right back in again.
Okay, got it.
So, and that's what we're doing today. It's kind of, I'm kind of glad and, and disappointed that Tom's not here at the same time, because this is kind of like a big accounting thing where we're putting money here and moving it there, so, uh, so then we're, get down to that line, step two ESA that was approved in twenty fourteen. So this is the main contract we've been working under since two thousand fourteen for the design of step two. Um, and so all of that work is associated with step two or applicable to step two. There was a small amendment done, number one, back in seventeen, um, and that was to deduct the portion of step two, which was the golf course, um, which were, which was done and that's all been paid for and so that's why we're taking that out of this whole analysis. So what I'm trying to get you down to is this one point one seven number, which is where we started, um, with our original two engineering agreements, okay? On what the fee was. So if you slide down there, then I've got basically just the dollars for what the three, um, agenda items are tonight and what we're doing here, okay? So the first one is step two amendment number two, um, and we're deducting out nine hundred and sixty thousand from that contract, or nine fifty-eight five hundred. Um, and that more or less corresponds with the next to last item in, on the top half of the page. So we're deducting nine eighty, or nine fifty-eight five hundred out of the nine eighty-three for that one. Then if you go down to the next one, step one, SRF ESA amendment number three, um, we're taking that two sixteen eight twenty-five number, that very first number that you mentioned, um, and so all that's coming out now and going into this new rural development agreement. And then the very last, uh, oh, then the last item is what then, when we do all of these transfers and jumbles around, what the new total becomes with this new agreement in the rural development style. So boiling that all down, we're very close to what we originally were back in two thousand thirteen. Our fee has gone up, um, that fifty-five thousand number, um, and we've got several reasons listed down there. The primary reason is just time. Our fees have gone up since two thousand thirteen. Um, uh, and then there are several other things. There's a little bit of this, of additional scope that we're actually doing with this new agreement that was not originally included in the two thousand thirteen project. Okay, any questions on any of that?
So that, and so again, the, the increase that you're seeking in the, in the third action item then would be fifty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Yep.
So that's what we're increasing, and then the first question is, does that still fall within contingency or budgeted amounts for that?
So that is a little bit, I'm gonna, I don't know the exact number, but it is a little bit above the budget for what rural development has currently approved, okay? We've discussed this with rural development, with Sherri Rice, and also with Kate Sand in Des Moines. And their opinion is to proceed with this now. And in about a month here, we're gonna have a bid opening. And at that time, we're gonna know where the budget really needs to be. So then we're not gonna do anything with the rural development budget still after we get those bids open. Hopefully, knock on wood, they come in under what our estimate is, but.
So if it comes in under, if it comes in over, the USDA is saying they may stretch their lending?
Yeah, you'll have, the loan will have to be adjusted a little bit.
So they'll cover it?
Yeah, I think they will.
Just had to rewrite the terms a little bit. These numbers have been in brackets, say it's been paid out already, is that the point?
Okay, no, you need to flip to the other side to see that. So if you flip to the backside, now we've taken the 1.23 million, and this is broken up into how much we're billing for all the different phases of work. On the far right column on this sheet, it shows how much we've completed of each one of those tasks to date.
And the number on the back includes your requested increase?
And this is, this is a little bit of an aside, but since we're getting to the point where this will be our last borrowing request, correct, from rural development? What was the total that we've received on this project in grants?
This is all loan, I believe.
This is loan, but.
This is 100% loan.
Yes, I know this is, but over the, over the course of the last five years, what have we received in grants? It's somewhere between seven and nine million dollars, I believe.
Denise, you might know better than me. I want to say that there is about three million for step one, and maybe four million for the wastewater treatment plant. And to Stephen's point about USDA wanting to, that they'll relook at our funding agreement, that we even are hopeful that maybe there's some grand dollars left over in the, in the region that we could apply. Like I said, it's nothing I'm holding my breath for, but it does give us an opportunity to ask for grant funds when we do a new agreement with USDA.
Okay, great, thank you. Appreciate it. So counsel, I think the bottom line is, are you, well, actually, we do have three, three action steps, so.
There's three items, and if you're going to approve them, they all need to be approved contingent on rural development concurrence.
Okay, so the motion would be stating that this would be contingent on approval by the USDA. Entertain a motion to approve the first one, which would be amendment two to the engineering agreement for step two.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Candy. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the same sign? And then the next would be approval of amendment three to the engineering agreement for step one, which were funds for step two taken out of step one allocation. Contingent on USDA approval.
Move to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen. Second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you, and then step three, or rather, the third item would be the rural development agreement pertaining to step two. And again, that would be for a total of 1,230,000 as a total for the step two, of which there's an increase of $54,675.
Contingent on.
Contingent on USDA.
So moved.
By Anderson. Second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you Stephen, appreciate it. Next counsel, we have engineering services agreement with French Reniker, which is for our street capital improvement plan, and I think Steve Hauser is here. Steve, would you lead us through that, please?
Good evening. First thing I want to do is introduce you to our newest licensed engineer. And the reason I'm introducing is he's put this project plan together, so he's gonna explain it. So let me tell you a little bit about Marcus Clark. He's actually a native of Fairfield, grew up here, went to school here. He does have a civil engineering degree with a transportation emphasis from Iowa State University, as I do. Good job. After graduation, he worked for a consulting firm in the Des Moines area for about three years. And then he started at French Reniker in September of 2017, just over two years ago. He did receive his professional engineer's license in December of 2018, just this last December. And he's primarily been working on street, highway work, and trail projects for us since he started with us. So I'll let Marcus explain a little bit about the project and the agreement.
Good evening Marcus, welcome.
Good evening. So the street improvement agreement is just a report that covers looking at all the streets in Fairfield and prioritizing them on the, what the condition of the road is, and looking at which ones need to be done something to. We'll be looking at, basically in the next five years, and looking at them for just distress in the pavement and like the rigibility of the roads. And then we'll also be looking at putting cost estimates together for the cost, and looking at different costs per year, for the estimates, like if you guys want to spend so much money per year, depending on how much you want to spend on the roads, like 500,000, a million, or we'll look at that. Put that all together in a report, and I'll give it to you guys.
All right. Thank you, I appreciate that, and I know counsel, looking forward, I know that we do have some, some major bonding from about eight, nine, or 10 years ago that will be coming off in the next couple of years, and in those bonds, we, you know, did heavily towards street work. You might look at that as far as the timeline, I know Aaron, you've talked about that too, so that, that would be information to get from the council and the city administrator going forward on your plan. I know they can be modified at any time, but. Be good, it would be, it's always hopeful, you know, for people to look forward. You know, if somebody's street needs repair, they need it now. And we understand that, but if it's at least in our five-year plan, that really helps. And folks are always welcome to call attention to those streets that are in great need so that we can have you guys inspect it. Great. Thank you, appreciate it. So counsel, entertain a motion to approve the engineering agreement with French Reniker for the capital improvement plan?
Move to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next counsel, we'll move to our third and final reading of the Small Cell Facilities Wireless Technology Ordinance. Doug, any feedback from, to your committee, anything additional that you've received that you'd report on this?
Mostly, if I had gotten any feedback, it's about the dangers of 5G, but this ordinance doesn't deal with the permission or installation of 5G per se. And so I would, nothing that pertains directly to this ordinance, no.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, counsel? If not, open up the public hearing on the ordinance, and I know there's one gentleman here tonight, John Coggin, who would like to speak to the council regarding the ordinance. Do you do that at this time?
So I've already spoken with Doug at length. And so it pertains a little bit indirectly to the ordinance, what I have to say. So also, basically what I want to be able to do is, I spent over 400 hours doing research about EMF. And my initial reason for looking at it didn't have to do with health. It was, I was a little bit more concerned about privacy. And what I found out actually, and why I spent so much time, I thought I would be maybe spending a week or something like that, and it turned out to be about six months of research. So basically, what I found actually is that EMF is definitely damaging to biological life. There's tremendous amount of scientific research that supports that. It's damaging to the DNA. It's been shown by enough studies to be declared a non-human carcinogen. And I've sent actually a paper to Michael and to Doug regarding that. And also Ed, I sent that to you, I don't know, a couple of months ago. So anyways, what I would like to do is to, in one sense, is to find out how to communicate with the council, because it's a huge subject, it's a complex subject. And, you know, obviously, this meeting is not the place to handle that. So I would be asking the council for some kind of direction as how I might be able to interact with the council, because I think at this point, my knowledge of the subject is, would probably be as a, you know, very well-educated investigator. And there's, besides health, there's also a problem that will be affected with 5G, and that is security and privacy. Through 5G, what will be able, what will be available to somebody who could be a bad actor is the ability to identify people inside any building that is within range of the 5G, who they are and what they're doing, where they are located in the building. And that's basically done, the technology of analyzing radio waves from Wi-Fi. And 5G is basically about Wi-Fi. It's not so much about cellular service, it's about being able to bring internet to the public. It's another transmission of internet. And it doesn't, I mean, the, what we have now is 4G, and advanced 4G, they call it 4G LTE or something like that. And that is, I mean, that makes really good communication with cellular. So 5G is very much oriented to rapid downloads, rapid download speeds, and entering the internet provider market. That's really what 5G is about.
Yeah, I think, I think we, you know, we are familiar with it, this, you know, prior to this ordinance, which is essentially giving us some governance over placement of antennas. Minimally, but, you know, we do understand that, you know, we have citizens in our community that are very concerned about their exposure to RF, and we respect that. Which is why, you know, the city really took the lead in initiating the negotiation with Alliant Energy on the smart meters to have an approved opt-out prior to it formally being announced that there was going to be a move to smart meter. So we've, we've been through the, you know, the concerns of citizens, and we want to do as much as we can. Now, there's gonna be an opt-out policy approved by Alliant, it's still being negotiated what the final will be. The city has its own opt-out policy on meters, radio frequency meters for our water department, so we're sensitive to that. The 5G, we're handcuffed, essentially. There are federal FCC rules, and there are state cell siting laws that basically preempt most of what we can do to, to basically block the technology. There's a lot promoted out in the public right now about all of the US Conference of Mayors, different organizations in Washington DC that advocate for cities and towns that are against the 5G rollout, but none of them are for health reasons. Most of those essentially start by saying, you know, we are, you know, we are in favor of seeing a 5G rollout in this country. We just want our peace. So they want, they want the franchise fees, and they want their ability to, you know, for local control, for siting, and those kinds of things. So there's really very little that we can do at this time. We can be sympathetic ears, but there's very little that we can do in terms of stopping the rollout of this technology. I think, counsel, if you have any other comments, I mean, that's kind of the understanding that we have having been through this at this time. Just a second, I'm gonna have some of the council.
I do recall reading somewhere along the line that the FCC would not permit us to deny an application due to health concerns.
Yeah, that's in the FCC rules. And it's also in the state cell siting laws as well. So there's, you know, until that changes now, people will also bring up a couple of cities in Washington State and a few in California who have taken some more restrictive action on the rollout of these siting antennas. But that's because the state legislature's allowed for it. Our, you know, our legislator voted unanimously several years ago to approve the cell siting rules that are in place now. So until those change, we really can do nothing at the, you know, at the local level to, you know, to stop this development.
Well, actually, there is an angle. I was reading the state code, or the state legislation regarding that. And there is an angle of where if a locality, what they call an authority, has a code in place, then, and that code can be a safety code, and it can be a health code.
I don't believe that's the case, but, I've read them myself, and I know our city attorney has read them also, but, you know, we, if you can send me what you, what you think.
Yeah, well, it's very clear, actually. It says if there is a code, I mean, it has to meet Iowa electric code, it has to meet Iowa fire code, it has to meet.
Yes, for those levels, of those levels.
We have safety codes in already.
For public safety.
Public safety, right.
And it also says, it says distinctly health.
Yeah, the interpretation might be somewhat different.
The problem would be.
Well, I don't think code is actually supposed to be interpreted, it's supposed to follow what the words say.
But the manufacturer's gonna say that their technology is safe, and you're gonna say it's not, and.
Well, there's a, I mean, there's a couple ways to go.
We're not, we're not gonna debate that here. So we've, we've given you your three to five minutes at this point. If you're welcome to communicate more information.
See, I was gonna speak to your request of how to address us, and all of our emails are public, and what I would encourage you to do is present your topic or, you know, your idea, and then for those that, like specifically the committee that's overseeing this, but even those of us that have a personal interest, then we could respond and have a one-on-one engagement with you. But I would definitely utilize our emails and send us the information you have. And like I said, then, those of us that have the time, or the committee members would be able to see your research or your ideas, or even share that code through email, and the mayor, whoever can look into that.
And John, I think my point is that, given our history with, you know, dealing with these technologies and trying to do as much as we can to avoid, you know, the contact from citizens who are concerned, is we will do what we can, but in this, in this instance, we're, you know, we're really locked in more than in those other areas, so.
Would I be able to talk with the city attorney about some of that? Because, I mean, there's some very specific things that, I mean, for one, like what the state code actually says.
I'd rather direct you to our city administrator and then have him consult our city attorney with that. Well, I appreciate your presentation. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council at this time on the consideration of this third and final reading? Not entertain a motion to approve the third and final reading for the Small Cell Facilities Wireless Technology?
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Anderson. Discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you.
Just, I have a question. So this ordinance, now that it's passed, delegates how they hang towers and all the mechanics of installing towers and that kind of thing, but we don't have anything that covers application process fees and that kind of thing, so do we need to put that into place? I heard there was a.
Something, it's a good point, Doug, is we have it for cell towers, but, you know.
This is different, I think, and.
Yeah, right.
I heard a, there was a news released by USL earlier, that they're bringing 5G to Iowa.
So here's what they're, yeah, so what I spoke.
And I heard also that they're going to use their existing cell towers, not the small cell towers.
So what they're doing initially is they're, they're introducing it in Iowa and Wisconsin. And they're doing a, they're using their existing towers, they have three macro towers in the Fairfield area, and they will be doing a software upgrade, which will allow them to broadcast at 600 megahertz, and would deliver a 5G signal. At this point, and again, I don't know what, you know, impact that really has, what, you know, my, what I glean out of it is that, you know, the fact that there aren't going to be repeating antennas in neighborhoods and closely spread throughout the state, it would be, have less of an impact, hopefully.
One of the problems, you know, one of the problems is that people can call it 5G, and it's not millimeter wavelength technology, it's 4G wavelength technology with enhanced algorithms that allow them to speed up the information delivery.
Right.
And I talked to someone at Lisco who said there's no definition of what 5G is, so when you bandy about the words 5G, we don't always know what you're talking about.
Right.
And so it's not clear, you know, what they're, what they're transmitting, actually. Sounds like it's going to be a 4G signal with enhancement.
If they're putting it on their tower, can we make them fill out an application? And pay a fee?
It's probably covered by the.
You know, I don't know that we, basically, it's just sighting for us, it's not, you know, we don't have anything written about technology upgrades, it's really theirs, their area, but it, but essentially, it's, this is the first, this is the first announcement they're talking about this, starting this in 2020. After I asked their representative if they have plans in the future for small cell deployment, they said they don't, but they're not going to rule it out at this point in time, I guess they'll find out if this meets the customer demand, the customer needs, and they'll go from there. So, you know. So, anyway, we'll then move on to committee and board reports, Public Safety Committee.
We have one old business, yeah, you can click that link, Jason. So at our last meeting, we discussed the sign, the warning traffic approaching from the west on Walton, that there'd be turning traffic coming from the Prairie Lakes Drive. And based on that, our street superintendent and city administrator would like to, if you scroll down, Jason, would like to install a sign, I believe it's at the bottom, keep going down, there it is, that sign, approximately 100 to 200 feet east of Prairie Lakes Drive, should be on the north side of Walton Road. And I don't believe we need council action if it's just a sign that the street superintendent's installing. Okay, just a heads up. The other meeting we had was earlier tonight, there were four items on our agenda. The first was parking at Washington School. So Washington School is using a similar methodology as they use at Pence, where parents are lined up in their cars in a queue, and they're traveling westbound on Madison. Other parents who don't want to stay in the queue, park their cars, get out, get their kids from the school, get back in their cars, and it's creating quite a bit of a bottleneck on Madison. So we addressed D Street a couple of years ago, and put in those no parking signs, only in the mornings, in the afternoons, during drop-off and pickup. And the committee's going to recommend no parking, sorry, restricted parking, so it's only during those times, restricted parking, school hours on school days, I can't remember the exact hour, 7:30 to 8:30 AM and 3:00 to 4:00 PM, I believe, on both the north and south sides of Madison, from D Street to E Street, and then just the south side of Madison, from E Street to Hillside. And we believe this will relieve the bottleneck situation and make it safer for everyone. So we'll, we'll bring that one back more formally at a future meeting. We briefly discussed on Iowa Avenue, no parking one side, it was just brought by one resident on that street, so we felt that it'd be better to get the word out there so that other residents could speak up, so we'll just, I'll include it in these meeting minutes, and maybe the press can share it, and we'll share it on our Facebook page, and consider it at a future time. But it is also a narrow street, and when there's parking on both sides, it is difficult to travel through there. So no action at this time. We also looked at the intersection of Jefferson Avenue and 20th, about, again, a citizen expressed concern and thought maybe a four-way stop instead of a two-way stop would be a good idea. Instead, we're going to, Scott Vaughn decided he would talk to the property owner who has some pine trees in the kind of northwest part of that intersection, about trimming those back, or maybe cutting those, makes it a little bit difficult to see traffic on, coming westbound from Jefferson. And the last item was, we discussed the downtown two-way restoration, we had a motion and a second to table that from this committee, so the committee will not be making any sort of recommendation on that, but the council will be voting November 14th on whether to allocate the funds for that project or not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we'll have a Water and Sewer Utilities Committee report, Martha.
Yes, Water and Sewer Committee met just before City Council, and we had three items that we discussed. The first item actually pertains to 508 East Kirkwood, and this was an instance where they were doing work on the house, they had been away for more than two months, and unfortunately, the contractor in installing the new toilet neglected to double-check the fact that the tank lever was not functioning. So needless to say, water was being leaking, and also was going on down into the sewer. So the committee at this point, I guess, would ask that the council deny this sewer request for Alexandra Moreno at 508 East Kirkwood.
Okay, so a motion to deny the request by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Hallie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you, Martha.
Then we have two other requests. One is for Cheryl Brady, who lives at 907 West Stone Avenue, and this has been kind of in the mill for several months. And unfortunately, that, the problem is, again, she lost her husband, which of course added to her problems in terms of payments, et cetera, but the main thing about it is, they'd done a lot in renovating the house, and it is a dirt basement that she has. And the thing is, the water obviously was going down into the dirt basement, so there was certainly no way that it could go to the sewer. And when they tried to dig up the sewer pipe, that, you know, they realized that it wasn't even functioning. So at this point, we would really request that the council approve her difference and ask that she not pay for the sewer, because I think it really has been a hardship for her. And the water department has tried to work with her, and she has been willing to try to make payments, but her water bill was horrendous, and so she's willing to work on paying her water bill, but I would ask that we deny, or that we accept the fact that she will not be.
What's the total, total on that?
The, it was $766 for her sewer. So we would ask that that be not charged.
Right, committee concluded that the, that water did not go down the sewer.
Yeah, and this.
So we're reimbursing the sewer portion.
You know, it really has been unfortunate, it's been going on, as I say, for six months, more than six months.
The difficulty of this one also, because Mrs. Brady came into City Hall.
Reimbursing the portion that did not go down the sewer.
Right, I mean, it's really unfortunate that it had to reach this point.
This took place in February.
So as I say, I would ask that the council approve the fact that we will not be charging her for that amount.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay, thank you.
Then we have one other request, which is from Gina Brockin, which is at 1105 Liberty Drive. It was a very interesting request, and it's almost funny, because she's asking for help with her water bill, because her grandson decided to help her in the yard, and so he was going to water her plants. And unfortunately, when the water was going on, he neglected to turn off the hydrant. So it took several days before the reality sunk in that there was water, thank goodness. They called her from the City Hall and explained to her that it was a large water bill, which was very unusual for her. So it was not going into the sewer, it was strictly watering the lawn. So we would like to ask that the council, again, approve her request.
And what's the amount on that, Martha? The portion that.
That her water bill was $320.
Okay, so.
Twenty-one cents.
Sewer portion, right.
Yes.
The water, the sewer department confirmed that? Normally, we send somebody out to look at these, don't we?
Yeah, we do, yeah, we take record of that. Yeah, the last one, Brady, the issue there, because was that it took place in February, and the temperatures were low, they didn't see water leaking because it had all frozen under there, so there was a determination made at the time that it must be going into a drain somewhere, but it was really the frozen ground.
Because she had a dirt basement, it really was, you know, just kind of disappearing.
So this was an external leak.
It was just disappearing.
So it couldn't have gone down the sewer.
Right.
So I approve of approval.
Okay, motion to approve the reimbursement of $322 for this report. Second by Anderson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay, thank you, Martha, appreciate your work on that. Next, we have a presentation from the Wayfinding Commission, and Terry Baker is here from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and we're going to look at the history of streets in the downtown square.
That is just what you want to do.
Yeah.
Be thirty on the Monday nights.
What were they discussing at the council in 1904?
That's right.
1906.
So, I'm going to be somewhere else, but I don't get anywhere.
You need to use the mic. This one brought my.
You can take it off the hand.
You can take it, Terry.
Okay, so we're going to, I'm going to go through some of these, some of them I'm going to go through pretty quick, because we don't need to spend a whole lot of time looking at historical pictures, but these are pictures of the square. Okay, and one of the things that we want you to notice is that the square was round. And this again, Broadway Avenue, one of the reasons we're also showing these, not just for entertainment quality, but also so you can notice that there was two-way traffic on these roads. Here's the first automobile in Jefferson County. This was when parking was in the middle of the street, that beloved third lane was actually for parking instead of for vehicles to deliver. Same thing here in the 1920s. Just a quick mention that these, this slideshow is on the city website, so if you want to go really study these photos, you need to go take a look. They're kind of fun. And Main Street. Moving into the 40s and the 60s.
You can see the building that we just did as part of the streetscape, that, oh no, the McDonald's there was covered sometime after 1964. Go ahead.
That would be kind of an interesting slideshow to show the history with the, with the facade project. All right, then we had a population explosion with Parsons College between 1960 and 1967, and at this point, the city designated 55 blocks of eight streets as one-way. Why did they do this? Because there was a huge increase in student population, and there were a lot of cars, especially nice little fast sports cars in town, and they were zipping all around, and so it became necessary to control traffic and the movement of that traffic. Throughout our history, our city streets have been two-way, and they were converted in 1967 in order to improve traffic movement, and we really want to emphasize that word "movement." By the time Parsons College closed in 1973, 46 of those blocks were converted back to two-way. This is our little slide showing the number of one-way streets that were here from 1839 to 1967, as in none. These were the one-way streets from 1967 to 1972, and this is to present day. You'll notice that they predominantly are around the downtown area. Our proposal, which we're proposing for City Council to consider, is that we change those streets to a two-way, back to a two-way designation, except for the two blocks of Main Street, and there's extenuating circumstances for that right now, we hope to eventually be able to convert that one as well. And obviously, Hempstead Street is still one-way, and probably serves its constituents in that area very well with staying as a one-way. I'm not taking your questions. Maybe later. The recommendations, this is not something that we've just made up, or that we want to make inconvenient for people, or, you know, like, we want to make life more difficult. We're actually taking this recommendation from a number of different consultants and groups that have been to our community and have made these recommendations, both for walkability, bikeability, for downtown development in general, making sure that people actually slow down in the downtown and actually view this as the heart of our community, and actually can appreciate what's happening in that community. This is one of the recommendations from the Iowa Architectural Foundation, one of the drawings they did for us. So we basically are looking at three major reasons why we want to make this transfer in and restore these streets, improve safety, simplifying travel, and strengthening our Improve safety means that we want to have more direct access for emergency vehicles, we actually will see calmer traffic and increased pedestrian safety, and will improve traffic flow by expanding the access. Simplifying travel means that we're going to reduce confusion, especially for our visitors. I think this is one of the things that we notice when people tell us that they see this wrong-way traffic going in the downtown, predominantly, the license plates are from out of town. When that happens, we find that we have presented ourselves as a very unfriendly community, because basically, we have these signs saying, "Don't enter," they're going the wrong way, people are honking at them, it becomes a really challenging situation. We did actually discover that maybe up to 50% of those vehicles going wrong way are actually locals who think they've just found a little shortcut, and so they're just going to zip around the corner. So it does, it does create some confusion for people. We also want to maximize the access to points, different points in our downtown area, and minimize the driving time and distance for people trying to access our downtown. All of these things are really part of a larger picture, a larger plan, to make our downtown more accessible, make our downtown more welcoming, and make it a destination and experience that people really want to come to. We strengthen our downtown, we simplify the directions to get to various downtown locations, we'll enhance business exposure and visibility, and increase tourism and economic development and activity. Right now, 84% of the county's downtown squares have two-way streets. There are a few that do not have that in various configurations, we are there on the three, four one-ways. The, on the all-one-way, you'll see Indianola has a little star, that's because they are in the process of converting their downtown streets to a two-way configuration. What this really indicates is that people driving in Iowa, when they come to the downtown of your county seat, they are actually expecting to be able to go two ways on your downtown street. That's what they're used to in most of their downtowns. So if, for example, we are in the car at the yellow dot, and we want to go to Gupta's vegetarian restaurant, but we've missed a turn, we didn't turn on Main Street, we're heading east, this would be the route that we would have to take. This is with a one-way street configuration. Now restoring that back to two-way, this would be the route we would take. Now restoring that back to two-way, this would be the route we would take. Let's say we're going to go to Torino's. And we actually make the turn at Main Street off of Burlington. This would be our first leg, at which point we'd have the option to park somewhere and walk over to Torino's. But let's say the parking is full. So they, we continue around and we'd have to take that route to, in order to get to that restaurant. With a two-way configuration, it's a simple right-hand turn. Or left-hand turn. I don't do my directions well. And it's really fun because when I do bus tours, they always comment about that. So this is my favorite. Here we are, ready to do a romantic evening at Amore Mio Cafe. Probably one of the longest routes to get to a restaurant from Burlington. And when we restore this to a two-way configuration, a much simpler route can be taken. One of the things we also want to point out is a safety factor. So when we have a complete one-way configuration, we actually have, the car that would be in the right-hand lane might see a pedestrian in a crosswalk, but the cars in the middle lane probably would not. They would have their view blocked by the car to the right of them. This is downtown Grinnell, I believe. This is showing their two-way configuration. And at this point, if a pedestrian starts to walk, go into the crosswalk area, you'll see that this car can see them and the, oh, sorry, the other car can see them as well. The benefits of doing the two-way streets, better business access for sure. And we're finding this with many of our businesses, especially on Court Street. This is one of their major complaints about having a location on Court Street is access is quite limited and complicated. It'll also actually improve our parking utilization. There is a number of parking spots on Broadway in particular that are being underutilized just because it's not, it's not a place that you can easily access. Will eliminate unnecessary driving, making it safer for people crossing streets, better walkability and bikeability, reduced wear and tear on the streets. No questions. This is just a simple map showing that, that our proposal would simply mean that there's a restriping of the parking on one side of the streets in order to accommodate that change of direction. The middle lane that we are so happy to have for our UPS drivers and whatever is still maintained. They can still make their deliveries and not be inconvenienced in any way, shape, or form.
Two to the left. Just a solid.
Costs. So when we first started studying this, the cost was rather extraordinary. And over time and looking at some different ways that we can make this happen, we've actually been able to, actually, I can't say that I've done this. I have to say that, that this was Erin and Melanie that really made this work so beautifully, that the cost is really under $75,000. The money would be coming from the local option sales tax, which already has money designated for street and street construction projects. And these are the two lines of the ordinance that would have to be changed. This is basically an article from Atumwa when they did their street conversions, talking about how everyone thought there were going to be a lot of accidents, that everyone was going to be upset about it, and actually, people were saying how much they enjoyed it, they could actually find their shops easier, and it actually was safer and not the chaos that everyone thought it was going to be. And there's our information. If you want to go in and look. So now, I don't know that we want to do any questions, but that's up to you.
No, if the council has questions...
Yes.
So Main Street's not included here?
Main Street is not.
Still have one way on that street, which might be confusing to people. But what's the total cost to include Main Street and down to the two blocks, down to in front of...
Melanie, do you want to talk about that?
I haven't, I haven't ran those numbers specifically. Probably looking at around $100,000 for the improvements. But our biggest hurdle in doing Highway One would be changing the light, negotiating with the DOT for the timing. The DOT would require a traffic study in order to be able to make those changes. And so you're probably talking $20,000 just on a traffic study that the DOT might not approve. So I'm, I would say around figures, 120, 125 in order to do Main.
Would the number of parking spaces be remain the same or would it be different?
Yes.
Okay.
I want to talk about handicap.
Because I know the second block there is narrow.
Without the change on Main, the total number of spaces would not change with this proposal.
You know, I meant if you put Main Street in for the two blocks.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Places would you lose?
Thank you for bringing that up. So the block in front of Revelations is a foot or two narrower than the other streets in the downtown. And so in order to make that work, one of the sides there, likely the one in front of Lockman's, we would have to steepen the angle of those parking spaces, losing one or two spaces in order to make the driving lanes wide enough for two-way traffic on that block.
And that's, that cost is included in the $100,000?
Like I said, the $100,000 is just off-the-cuff guess. I have not looked at those numbers specifically.
Melanie, why do you think DOT would not approve? What's, what's the potential there? I'm not sure I understand. If there was a signal change.
Right. Because the, DOT wants to move the traffic on Highway One and that left turn is the primary...
Because it'll back up.
What?
It'll back up traffic more than it does now.
You know, and if you're, right now, we already have enough problem with traffic backing up as we have a pedestrian trying to cross Highway One. If you now have traffic headed south that the Highway One traffic is going to have to turn across, you're really going to slow down the traffic on Highway One.
Wouldn't you have the same problem on Court Street since you have that block having left-hand turn lanes in both directions? Wouldn't you have the same problem backing up the traffic?
But I would think presumably because it's Highway One and there, it, there's more traffic and you come up second and then you take the little spur on Broadway and then, so there's a, presumably there's a higher traffic count, I think would be the answer to that as opposed to on the other side of the square.
But we don't know.
Yeah, right.
Because there's only half of a block that you could have a turn lane in.
Yeah, I mean, my question...
If there's an island, then therefore the crosswalk would be less than that.
My question would be, from the traffic study that was done in 1964, was there information on that? Because really, at the same condition then.
I have not looked into it.
I know, see, they probably keep records. See if they have any.
Yeah. They're probably still referencing it. And I'm at City Council.
Yeah. Any other questions at this point? So Terry, thank you very much. I just wanted, before you finish, put it in the context of you're representing the Wayfinding Commission and also the Convention of Visitors Bureau. And the Wayfinding Commission is essentially, has a number of different goals that they're trying to establish to make the, you know, the downtown more desirable to visitors. This was one that has come recommended several times and, you know, would, would be a significant improvement in the downtown along with other things. So...
Absolutely.
Yeah, appreciate that. And has everyone noticed the kiosks that have been assembled into downtown? Really nicely designed, well-done. And Darrell, thanks for making those bases for us, too. Appreciate it.
Terry, do you anticipate printing off the information that you've shared on, you know, our, I guess I would just, from regarding, you know, the questions and some of the answers that we have available for people?
Yes. In fact, some of that, a lot of that information, I know that Darian is going to be going around talking to a lot of the retailers and the businesses around the square, making sure that everyone is informed.
I thought that was such good information that people really would understand a lot more of the reasoning that we're doing this.
Yes. Yes, we definitely want to get that information out there.
Good.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move to our administrator and department reports. Erin, do you have anything before we invite Melanie to talk about the EPA update?
I'm going to keep it, I'll keep it short tonight. I heard that. Downtown lighting update. Alliant is moving in with their contractors. I know Priority right now is going to be changing the, the internal workings of the old decorative lights to the LED lights. I've been told that the power poles that were going to replace the old dinosaur lights are still being manufactured, so I don't know when that's going to be put in. But again, after we've signed the contract, this is strictly on Alliant to get the project management part of this taken care of. I've also been worked, there was a Grapevine email that went out about cities utilizing the Department of Corrections for parks cleanup, cemeteries, and even street stuff. I'm actually having Calvin look into utilizing, possibly having the city here utilize the Department of Corrections for some of our difficult times as far as manpower, whether it be spring, summer, and fall, particularly in the parks. I'm going to have a, we'll have a presentation or a recommendation in the future for that, but that's something we're looking into for cost savings and for more manpower.
Okay, thank you, Erin. Appreciate it. Melanie, your report?
Attached to the agenda is the EPA update. The city is required to submit this twice a year. And really, it's in front of you, just so you know that we're doing what the EPA mandated. The first five pages are a narrative and they pretty much mirror what I've written in my project updates to you guys on a monthly basis. At the bottom of the first page, it talks about the substantial completion date for the wastewater treatment plant. I will add a line in there about how this was a change order, just so that the EPA is aware of the actions that were taken tonight. Starting on page five and six is the amendment to the schedule. And as I talked to, or talked during the change order, we're not going to request an amendment to the schedule on the wastewater treatment plant because we are very close to completion. We are requesting a change to the construction period for step two. But other than that, we are on schedule with things, looking at starting a flow study for step three in January. And McCula will be down here at that time to present those. And then lastly, on the next pages, seven and eight, is a summary of the sanitary sewer overflows in the last six months. One of the things I wanted to point out is that we had three large overflows from the stormwater detention ponds. These were before the influent pumps or the big pumps that take all the flow up to the top of the hill. They were not operational at the time of these overflows. Had they been operational, we wouldn't have had these. So I really want to say that, you know, the, we're already seeing a reduction in the overflows due to the improvements now that we have parts of the plant up and running. No action, just letting you know that we're submitting it.
Great. Thank you, Melanie. Appreciate that. Hey, Council, if there isn't any other business, entertain a motion to adjourn. Tom Twohill's not here, so somebody else is going to have to make that motion. Martha?
Move to adjourn.
Second. Moved by Rasmussen, second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the same sign.
Yeah, Thomas.